We are live. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We're joined today by founders Greg and Amanda. Jessica and Colin are here as well. You know them from the inbox and from right here on this this weekly session. And we know you guys over here in the comments are excited to see some site reviews today and learn about some fun new features that we've got. Maybe a quick show of hands. How many of you guys who are showing up, who are here today, are planning to or currently need to be able to take payments on your website? How many of you would like to be able to collect monies from your website? Awesome. Yeah. So we're, we're going to show you a new way to do that today. We've also got a fantastic new branding feature. How many of you are, how many guys are working on personal branding, branding yourself? Getting yourself out there. I love it. I love it. So we've got a fun new feature for that as well as a very big request from you guys. And then we are going to do a couple of site reviews and of course, Q and A for you guys who are here. So let me just kind of pop through a couple of slides here real quick and then we will get on off to the races. Excited to be with you guys today. Welcome. This is again, and I always forget to say, can we turn off the videos, guys, real quick? So that we get a little good quality, good quality video here without the overlay from Zoom. Thank you. All right. So welcome again. Today, we're going to talk about branding yourself on Get Oiling with a new feature that we have set up just for that purpose. And we're going to show you a new way for you to take payments on your Get Oiling site. Now, if you came here today with questions, for those of you who are brand new, if you've never been here before, this is not just a sit here and let us talk to you time or talk at you time. This is a time that we really want to use to work with you. So I want to invite you, if you have questions, or if you came here needing help today, head over to the Q and A and go ahead and start adding those questions so that we can get you squared away.
Hey, quick note, are you sharing slides? I don't see any slides.
I am sharing slides and it's not, it's not allowing me to. Thank you.
I see my name, but I don't see any slides.
Yeah, weird. Okay. So how about this?
There we go. There we go.
Great. Thank you, guys. All right. So again, if you've got questions or you need help, go ahead and add those to the Q and A right now. And in today's training, just a brief overview, what we're going to go over, we've got a new branding feature. Okay, so we have a lot of branding features and we can talk to you guys about some of what those are. If you came here with branding questions today, we'll take some time in the Q and A to talk about that and even maybe bring you out in chat. But we're going to talk about how you can use it. You'll see it demoed and how you can maximize it. And now also, we're going to show you this really cool thing. It's going to help you take one-time payments on your Get Oiling site. As many of you may already know, you are able to take payments in a number of different ways for a Get Oiling vault. So if you have coaching, or if you have a, a membership-based program, or a subscription service, or something to that effect, we support those kinds of payments on the vault level on your website. But now you've got a way to take them on an actual page. So if you have a one-time payment that you need, that's not attached to a vault, we've got a way to make that happen and we'll show you how to do it. And then we'll get into some live Q and A and we had two folks sign up for live site reviews. So we're going to take a look at that. If you are wanting to have a live site review, we'll share with you the details on how you can register for a live site review. So we can work with you on one of these calls at the end of the call today. So make sure if you're watching this as a recording, if you want to join us live, head over to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. So now let's get on over, Greg, if you will. Let's talk a little bit about the, what kind of magic you just created this week.
Sure. Yeah, a couple of awesome new features. The branding feature is actually like a customizable page footer. And I can share out my screen. Did you make me co-host? Let me see if I can share out my screen and see if I can show you what's going on. But yeah, now there's, I'll show you here in a minute, but normally there's that dark footer. Okay. See if I can get this going here. There it is. Okay. So what I'll do is I'm going to pull up a, one of the built-in website themes, for example. And I'll show you what's there right now. So like if I go to the very, very bottom of the site, you've probably seen this footer. It's got your name on there, address, a couple of links, some buttons. This has been pretty much standard. You know, if you could turn it on or off on a page, but you couldn't really, you can't customize it other than to edit, you know, this contact information maybe. And so this, we've had more and more requests now as people have been branding their sites more personally. Instead of having to like recreate the same footer on every page, is there some way of making a page footer that you could just build once and it automatically shows up on your whole site? And the answer is yes. Now you can do that. There's a new setting here. This is for premium or higher, for those people on basic that have that branding package add-on that we've recently added as well. To how that works, first of all, you do have to have a page that's set up as a footer. I'll show you that in a minute. And I did create one on this demo account called footer. But just turn it on. It's under Customize My Site. And when you scroll down to the bottom, there's some advanced settings along with some other cool things that we've added recently. But there's a new section here called Site Page Footer. If you choose the page, and I have a page called My Footer, if you choose this page that appears at the bottom of the site. So what I'm going to do here, I'll go back to the standard built-in page footer, which is the one that I just showed you. And I have this, I have a page on this test site loaded up. So what I'll do, so on the bottom of this page here is this standard footer that you've probably seen. It might be on your site right now. So I'm going to go back over here again and change it back to my custom My Footer that I had created just using the page builder. And we went through the page builder because it gives you so much more flexibility. There's multi-column layouts. There's all sorts of fun stuff that you can do in the page builder. That's a little bit more challenging to accomplish inside of like just a box like this. So you can build a page. It can be short. It can be tall. It can have all sorts of stuff on it if you want to. But now that I've changed that to the new footer, I'll come over here and refresh. And you'll see on the bottom now it's, you know, it's changed. That footer is not there. So any page now on the website is going to have those, that standard footer on there. And I don't think this, yeah, there's probably, maybe check the blog. But anyway, yeah, this will be throughout the site. You'll have on the footer, except for the member area that does actually have a different footer.
And that's in the member area settings, right? You can actually set that up in the member area settings. So we did get a, we got a speed request here real quick.
Oh, okay.
So just to reiterate, yeah, this, just to reiterate, right now, we are on the Customize My Site page. Right?
Yes.
And, and this is where we get to choose the footer. So if we scroll down and this is all the way down here at the bottom, Site Page Footer. And so it looks like, can you create multiple footers?
Uh, this one here, this email footer, is that what you're referring to?
Well, yeah, it says My Footer. Yeah.
Yeah, this one, you could create different ones, but you can only have one active on your site at, at the same time. Or at once, I mean. So once you've chosen that, it's just you use the page builder, which is under the My Site Settings menu. And also I'll walk you through how I created this simple footer. Because this is probably a pretty good layout for a lot of people, maybe three columns. You've got your copyright info, link to maybe some terms of use page that you have and some social links. So what I did here was pretty straightforward. I'll show you the, I guess I don't need, well, I'll keep that open here. But to get to this, the page editor again, backing up to that, go to My Site and then Settings, which is the screen we're on right now, and then click on Custom Pages over here. And then I'll just create a new one again. I mean, the, the footer one is in here. So if I go to page two, I think, yeah, here's the My Footer and I could, I could view it. If you just view the page, you can see it's actually just the footer. Which is kind of, kind of neat to be able to see that. But I'll create a new one to show you how I did this. And I started with this, just simply the blank page. And then added a section here and click Add. In this case, I did the three column, no header. You could also do the two column, no header, or maybe even the one column, depending on what you want to put down there, or choose any other creative layout, or whatever you want to do. Maybe one of the page templates has something you can start with. But in this case, I did the three column, no header. And then I just highlighted everything here in the first column. And I think I maybe said copyright info here. Did the same over here in the second column. And just legal info here. And then over here is maybe where my social links go here. And here's where, you know, you could insert, if you have a Facebook image, or you know, you can search the site, search Google or whatever, and you can find sites, or sorry, images for these various social sites, like the Facebook logo and put those on here and then link them. But that's basically what I did. Got a little fancy and I highlighted it all and centered it. So maybe it looked a little bit nicer. And I put a little fancy little background color on there. Just chose a slightly light gray. And then done. Other than that, oh yeah, that's not centered here. So just put a line break in there to make that more balanced in the middle. And that's basically it. I mean, you probably want to give it a name that makes sense under Settings, like My Footer, My Page Footer or something.
Yeah, you're probably going to want to name it Footers so that it's easy to, to know that it's a footer.
Yep. But otherwise, these other options don't really make any difference. It does have to be published. But other than that, I mean, the lead capture and payment and all that stuff doesn't apply to the footer. But once you have that done and save it, then you can just go ahead and use that on your site under that Customize My Site Link. So that's a fun little addition and a nice way to like, put that, you know, final touch on the bottom of your site. If you don't want to have that, you know, to repeat that section on the bottom of every page. If you don't want the footer on a given page, there actually is a setting here to, well, I shouldn't do this on the footer page. But if I come over to this page, which is like a normal page, under Settings, I, I could choose to turn it off. Like if you've got a page that you don't want your standard footer on, you can go ahead and check that on a normal page. Doesn't make any sense to do it on the footer or not, but. So that doesn't really matter here. But that's, yeah, that's kind of the gist of that. And it does, does let you put that nice finishing touch on there. So.
Yeah. And so for you guys, one of the things that I really love to use personally, if I don't use the specific images, like, or if you're having a hard time finding the images for say the social networks and such, or if you want to use the icons for the social networks and maybe color them to match your color scheme, you can go to iconfinder.com and you can actually, there's, there's tons of free icons there. I love to use them for this purpose. And so if you want to put your social links down in the footer of your page, highly recommend. You can search for anything here and then filter for free. I've, I don't personally pay for this service. So I mean, this is very easy to go grab those. And then you can use them. You could even link them. So actually just insert the image and then link to your social by linking the image. Camille asks, yeah, so the custom page footer will automatically be applied for all pages. You can't have unique footers to different pages, right? This, this would be applied across the site?
It is. Yeah. I mean, in the case where you want a unique footer, like if it's a one-off page, I'd just turn off the footer for that page and then maybe put that, you know, put whatever footer you want on there.
Yeah, I think a good, a good way to kind of break this down for a use case is, let's just say, for instance, you don't want just anybody on the internet to maybe get your personal phone number or, or your email address, but you want that to be something that's available to your members, right? So you would put your contact information on a footer for your member area vault for your members, but you would have something that's more promoted towards social, maybe providing a bit more curiosity on the rest of your site. Does using the footer option get rid of what is on the bottom now? Nikki asks, like the black section with link, address, independent distributor and stuff like that? Yeah, right?
It does. Yeah, this whole black section goes away down here and is replaced with whatever footer that you have. So if you don't want any of these buttons, you don't have to have them. You can totally remove the contact me and the contact info, which I know is troublesome for some people. They want to remain more private, which makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. And guys, if you want to brand yourself, and for those of you who are, who are just kind of getting familiar with this idea of branding yourself, the idea here is that you are putting, you're making it about them and how you can help them. And then once you're in a one-on-one conversation, then you're bringing up Young Living a little more clearly because you've got context, right? That's kind of the whole strategy of personal branding for network marketing. When you personalize your footer at the bottom of your site, there is no trace of anything. And they're not going to be able to poke around and find the next step. They've got to go to you for it. You're basically closing off all roads that don't lead to a one-on-one with you, which is kind of the whole point of getting people curious so that you can talk with them one-on-one and get them started, right? This is exciting stuff.
Yeah. Juliette had a question here. Is there a law that we have to show our address in the footer, as I mentioned in a previous session? That's actually different, not on the website. There's no law that says you have to have any physical address on a website. That's for the emails. If you live in the U.S. and I'm not, you know, obviously a lawyer, so I don't know all the specifics of this CAN spam law and who it applies to and who it doesn't apply to. I know if you're in the U.S. sending to U.S. customers, it does require, that law does require that you have a physical mailing address. Doesn't have to be yours. It just has to be able to get to you in order to be able to send out emails. And that's a different field under Customize My Site. I'll go back under there and open up Advanced Settings. And then there's a, below the Site Page Footer is the custom email footer. So that's where you'd want to put that. So, good question.
Yeah, very good question. Excellent. So, so yeah, this is, this is a new branding feature. Really exciting for, I mean, we've had a lot of you asking, you know, how do I remove that? Now you've got a way. And it is unlockable with our branding feature set at basic or just included at premium and above. Great. So let's talk about payments. So for the longest time, you guys, we, we've, we've been offering payments through vaults, right? So you can connect Stripe, which is what we use on our platform. You can, you can connect your Stripe to us. And you can process one-time payments, payment plans, recurring monthly billing through Get Oiling Vaults, right? And you can set those up at the individual vault level. But how many of you guys want to sell a workshop? You know, or, or, or a one-time thing, an ebook, or, or something that's not delivered in a vault, right? How many of you would love to be able to do that? So excited about this. All right. So, yes. So, so Greg, how do we do it?
Sure. Yeah, this is another exciting one. So this is also in the page builder, which I'll go through the steps here again. My Site Settings in the menu. And click on Custom Pages. If you're on, I think if you're on basic or higher, this will show up for you. You do have to connect a payment processor first. So actually, let me show you that, that process first, in case you haven't connected your Stripe account. In order to take payments, you do need to have a Stripe account. But to connect that, the first thing, if you haven't done this before, you want to do this, but if you have done it before, you can skip this step. So go under My Account Settings and then click on, it's called Payment Processing here. And then you'll have a list of the connected Stripe accounts. If you need to connect, click this Connect with Stripe button, it will connect the account. And then you'll end up with, you know, basically it'll be connected and it'll show up in your list of payments where you can, where you can deal with that. So now I'll go under, going under My Site Settings, back to the page builder here, open under Custom Pages. And it works on any page. There's a new section on any page. I'll just open up the same page that I was showing you a minute before. One of these little demo pages that we had. Under Settings, there's now this Payment Settings section. And you can choose, like, what do you want here? Which, which Stripe account? Most people only have one, but sometimes there's multiple people sharing an account and they might, you know, that, that might be a good reason to have a multiple Stripe accounts. But choose the payment processor that you set up in the previous step. Just check the box to require the payment. Type in the payment amount that you want, whatever it might be. You know, let's say it's $15.99 or something for an ebook, or 7.42, or whatever price you want. Choose your currency. If there's a currency that you're looking for that we don't have in this list, let us know. Stripe supports a lot of different currencies. These are the most popular ones that we've seen. And that's basically it. If you want to get a little advanced, you can create a Vault Access After Payment. So you have the choice, like, because of the Lead Capture page, actually, if I open up Lead Capture Settings, because it does let you add people to a vault right away, you can choose whether or not that payment actually gets them into the vault, like as if they paid for it, or whether or not that's still an extra purchase. Like maybe it's sort of a, you know, lead generation up, or maybe it's an opportunity for an upsell as a second step. If you just want, you know, if the vaults must be purchased separately, like it is there, it'll send them the welcome or the intro email, or whatever you have set up on the campaign for that vault and won't let them in. However, if you do check this and say vaults are included with purchase, then that will let them into the vault. So this basically also means that you can do a bundle purchase on more than one vault if you want, which is really cool. Instead of having to like walk them through sale by sale by sale. Now, this doesn't do a recurring payment plan, but it does let them into the vault so that they can, you know, access whatever that they, whatever that you have in the vault.
One thing I would love to see, like if, if you guys are creating things like ebooks, or like simple protocols or something like that, you can sell something on this form like Greg is showing you for $7, $15, what have you, and then give free access to a lead group, right? Like or some kind of high-value group that you put into your vault. So that's a really great way to kind of take advantage of what's in the marketing world, we call a tripwire purchase, you know? So somebody gets in at a, at a very easy, low barrier to entry price on some kind of product. That person who has made that purchase is exponentially more likely to make a much bigger ticket purchase with you.
Yeah, I'll show you what this looks like then. This appears in the Lead Capture pop-up. I do have one page that's set up with this. And I think I just have it set up on one of these buttons. It pops up the box. You can see there's the card payment. It shows the amount to be charged, that whatever you've got typed in the back there, put in the card number, expiration date. Otherwise, you know, it'll just show the fields that you have. Now, I do recommend name and email. At least, then at least you have some way to, it does email them a receipt afterwards. So I would highly strongly recommend both name and email because they're also passed to the credit card processor for all the fraud protection that they do as well. So at least have those two, plus the card payment. And then you can actually have other fields on there because the page builder does allow you to add other fields. You could have up to those six custom fields on there too, if you want to. If it's, you know, a physical product where you have to ship them something, you could have fields for the mailing address, for example. So all sorts of fun stuff you can do with this. But yeah, that's basically what it looks like. And then what happens when they purchase, if I go back over to the page editor and pull up Settings, after they purchase, it sends them to, let me expand that here a little bit. So if this is not expanded for you, it's under Lead Capture Settings. There's down towards the bottom, there's this field. This is after registration, send this URL. This is where you would send them after they've purchased. So if it's a downloadable PDF, you could just, if you want to, you could link right to the PDF. Or maybe it's a page that has a PDF on it, or whatever.
Or confirmation page.
Thank you page. Yeah, all sorts of possibilities there. If you leave it blank, it just pops up a little thank you box. That might be a little unsatisfying for those people purchasing. So it'd be nice to have a page, you know, have some sort of page that it goes to. But yeah, so that's kind of the, the complete flow from beginning to end.
There is a question while, while we're on this right now. Does the price automatically adjust when someone is, is in a different country, like for a different currency? If this is in, you know, it's $15.99 US dollars, what does it look like for the end user in say, Canada?
It's, it shows whatever currency that you choose in here. It doesn't adjust to the locale. With, inside of vaults, there is the option of creating like multiple payment options and each one of those can have a different currency. One curious thing about Stripe though, is like, once, once the customer gets created, they are basically required to pay with that currency type in the future. You can't make one purchase with USD and then another one with Canadian dollars for some reason. So if you do that through the vault, but if you go through this way, they can, you can have whatever you want to. But, but yeah, basically it, whoops, I didn't have that open. It'll follow whatever currency that you've got chosen here and it will require them to, it'll charge in that, you know, if you have the Euro here, it'll charge it. I assume, you know, that there's those, you know, that'll do the currency conversion if they're paying with a card and all that. Yeah, Elizabeth also asks, do they automatically get added to the CRM after making a purchase? Yes, they do. Just like all the other lead capture, triggers all the automations here, tags them, potentially adds them to the vault if you'd like, triggers a campaign. And then you have your option here about what happens with the vaults if they're, they get in or not. But yeah, it adds them to their, you get to add them to your CRM and you get a lead notification, email or text, or whatever that you've got set up. So the, the lead notification email will have the inform, it'll have the page name. So like whatever name that you have here, I believe, or is it the, one of these two fields, I don't remember offhand. It's, it includes that in the lead notification email so that you know what they purchased. And then if it's a physical product, you can fulfill it, or you know, if, if you just have the ebook or other downloadable, it's just all automatic, which is really nice.
Excellent. Who's excited about using this? Gosh, there's so much that you can do with it. I love the idea of doing a, like a one-time workshop with this and then having those people get access to a private Zoom link and having just sort of a single coaching call where maybe you can sell access to a vault that is maybe at a higher price point. Really, really exciting stuff and awesome. All right. So let's, let's head on over into, into some site reviews and then we'll get into Q and A. Let's see. And, and I want to go ahead and bring you out and forgive me, please. I, I believe I might butcher your name. Akosai, are you here? There you, here, I, I see you right up at the top and I would love for you to come out and chat with us first. Hello? How are you?
Hi, Akosu. How are you?
Akosu. Okay. It's so great to meet you. I'm doing well. I'm excited to share your site and chat with you about what you would like to see happening on it. I don't know. I can't hear you though. There we go. Okay, I, I'm not sure if, if I'm having connection issues on my end, or?
I'm hearing the same thing here.
Okay. So Akosu, if it may be better often, like it's, there's, there's kind of an issue if you have video and audio. If you want to turn your video off, that might help to speed up the connection with audio. Maybe try that? And we could also back and forth with, with the chat as well. All right. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay. Okay, just too many windows open. Yeah, we, we can't hear you just yet. But if you want to, we can kind of back and forth in the chat here until we get the audio part figured out, if you want. I do like this, this, this cat that's dreaming of being bigger and stronger.
Is that there?
Yes. Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So tell us a little bit about what you are wanting to do here.
Okay, very good.
I'm sorry.
My focus, I'm going through, I guess, the layers stages and can you hear me better? Now I'm closing out just about all of my windows so you can hear me.
Yes, yes, yes. I can hear you a lot better now. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right. I closed almost everything except the Zoom. Okay. And Chromebook doesn't have that power, I guess. Okay. So I am looking to, my, my, my back signal is actually towards women who are 45 and old, well, 40 and older during hormonal change, you know, sex and things like that. And so the challenge that I have, first of all, is that when I log in, when I put my website address in almost any other web browser except the Chromebook, this is what I get. Right? And there's no way to get to my actual page from here. When I'm on my Chromebook and I've checked my website, it's actually my website. So I'm thinking that there's something in the backend that I'm not connecting properly.
Okay, okay. So what you want to do, this is, what is, is that My Site Settings?
Right people, yeah.
Well, no, Greg, I, I think that what, basically, it sounds like what you're saying is that you have a page that you created that's not this, right? And you, and you want it to be your homepage. Okay, so this is the one. You're kind of breaking up a little bit, but this is, this is the one, right?
Right, that's the right page.
Okay, perfect. All right. So this is, this is the one. So what we want to do is make sure on our custom menu, which Greg reminded you, how do we do that? How do we custom menu?
Are you talking about turning off the landing page?
Or having, having this page be like show up on, like as this is the URL, because right now.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. It looks like there's a landing page turned on. So that's the first place I'd start under Customize My Site.
Okay.
Because that probably is a landing page there. We could turn that, yeah, it's got the glowing skin landing page. If you turn that to the default, then that should display whatever the homepage is. And if that doesn't work, then we can add that to the menu and make that the homepage. So yeah, if you refresh now, you're either probably going to get the.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
Yes, we got it. All right. So tell me more.
Okay, so I'm focusing on skincare because I'm a licensed esthetician in New York and hormonal changes and gut health. Those are my three things. That's it that I'm doing. And so my, I'm, I'm doing skincare first because that's what I have trained in and people always tell me how young I look.
Uh huh. And you do?
There you go. I actually figured out how to put it on there last week.
Does anybody believe this is forty-five?
I'm actually forty-eight.
What? Down, no.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to know more.
So that is my, that's my main thing. And so I need to, I would love some ideas in how to make my page look more than just skincare. And how to kind of ease into, but I have the hormones there right there in the front. So you let me tell you what you think.
Okay, so the, the first thing is I would opt to use this kind of font as sort of an accent as opposed to the main font for the whole page. Just because it makes it, it makes it easier to read. And, and the thing is, I think I mentioned this on a, on a previous work session where we are really fighting against a million different things all the time that are keeping our person from paying attention fully. And so we need to make it just really stupid, simple and really easy for them to engage and move their eye to what they need to see and know. And if we have kind of a busier scriptier font for a big body of, 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 of reading, which is what this is. Then it's going to be a little harder for them, for, for them to basically see, okay, I'm going to sit down and really invest in this. Now, if they already know you and they like what you have to say, that's another story, but we want to make this easy for new people to find their way in and get to where you want them to go. So I, that's the first thing. The second thing is, once you do that. I would, these, you, you've actually broken up the text here with, with some greats. You know, I mean, maybe they're slightly larger, but you definitely created space between them just visually. These are, this is where you could maybe just keep this text if you wanted to, like with these sort of punctuation phrases. So that, that's the first thing. I do, I, I like the purple. I think that this works fine as a color for your fonts.
That's my favorite color. Everyone who knows me knows that.
Yes, it's a great color. Are you a February birthday?
Actually, no, November.
Okay, well, this, this is my birthstone color. I love this color too. So, all right, so what I would say here is, is first, you know this. They don't know this, right? So a really easy thing for us to fall into a trap of when we're communicating in our copy is that we speak the things that are really kind of wrapped up in our own understanding. And our understanding is based on our journey having taken place already and taken us as far as we are today. The person that you are wanting to help and reach, you got to turn around and speak to them where they are. And their understanding is nowhere near as advanced as yours. And of course, that's why ultimately they're going to be following you and listening to what you have to say because you know things that they don't and you understand things that they want your help to be able to understand themselves. So what I would get at here is, is really speaking something to her. You know, that, that's going to make her stop and listen. Where, where she feels called out. So this would be, you know. You know, hey, you. Are you tired of feeling such and such kind of way? Hey, you know, you, you think it's because you're not eating the right things or exercising. But let me tell you something, there's something else going on. Keep reading. Right? So, so you want to think about, just think about what's going to make them go, oh, wait. Say, what? Like the more you could grab them, the better. So, so this, you know, hormones are not just for teenagers is definitely a, a bit of copy that belongs on your website. I don't think that it belongs in the headline because it's not necessarily going to translate straight to the person that you want to be reaching, especially when you consider that the whole of what you want to be showing up and talking about isn't just about that, right? So what I would say here is, think about your perfect person, your ideal, your back signal person that you're beaming that out to. What do they want to feel? Like, how do they want to be? It's kind of like that question, you know, if you were to, if you were to sell someone a weight loss product. You wouldn't say, well, you should buy this because it has this ingredient list, right? That's not why someone would buy. You would ask questions like, well, why do you want to lose weight? And then you discover that it's because they've got a class reunion coming up. And, and, and look and fly is the best revenge. So they want to look good so that they can show up and own a room, right? And, and that's a buying reason. So we want to think about what your perfect person's buying reasons are. It could be any number of things. And this is why, you know, Martha works with you guys on Bat Signal so much. It's because you really need to be kind of dialed into the emotional implications of what you have to offer. So, so speak to her, the whole her and make her someone that you can see in your mind. Marie Forleo in, in her Copy Cure course actually has you has you write down her eye color, like what is her eye color? What, what does she look like? You know, what, what kind of bag does she carry? What store does she love to shop at? Who does she follow? So that you, like, when, when you speak, they know, like, they, they feel called, even though they're reading words on a page. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I would, I would just spend a little bit of time thinking about who that person is. And, and you know someone in your life that's like this, right? Or, or maybe several someones, maybe, maybe you've got clients or friends or family who fit this bill. Just be thinking about, you know, what in their words, really importantly, their words. Are they trying to fix right now? Because we need to meet them with the language of now for them. Because, you know, you, Greg and I used to joke about this all the time. Everybody, everybody needs broccoli. Right? But everybody wants chocolate. You know, with, with, with the, with the hormone conversation, you know what they need to do. But it's kind of like trying to get children to eat their vegetables. Right? So that's just from a mindset perspective. Another thing that I might consider as well, and this is something that's come up a few times on homepages. Is that you maybe create, just with this sentence right here. Something that's very out, out front, I help you person, this very specific type of person. Get this thing that you want. And, and then you offer your lead magnet there. Right? So the thing that we were originally going to, when we were when we were on the landing page that your, your, your URL was directing to, that's a link that you would offer here. So you say, I help this woman get, do, be, have this thing. Click here to get my guide that'll show you how to get some part of that in five steps or something to that effect. That way also, and this is again, just taking advantage of the fact that we have such a narrow window of time to grab and retain someone's attention. That the more big and clear front and center opportunity for them to see and get what's in it for them right away. The more of that we can, we can do, the better off we are. Does that make sense?
So then, does that mean that I don't use the landing page where like the pop-up?
You, so what you would do here is you put a button here and, and you say, get mine. And then, and then you, you allow, then the, the pop-up comes up. Still use the pop-up by all means, but put a button up here. And then when you put the button there, just make sure that the link for the button is hashtag lead, L E A D. And, and make sure it doesn't open in a new window. I think I actually still have your, here, let me show you what that looks like. If we were to go to your homepage. All right, so your landing page, so your lead capture settings, you can have glowing skin at any age, get my guide. Okay. So what we're going to do is, is in this section, after you write out what you want there, you're going to add a button, right? Now, I'm probably not doing this right because it's all the way down here. We'll probably want to add a different section up here at the top as a matter of fact. Let me just undo all that mess I just did. So I'm going to add. I'm going to copy this. And move this up and I'm going to add a little section right up here at the top. I'm going to put this here. And now we're going to add a button. So let's put this green button here. We can go back and change this. If you like. So this will say need, and this will say, get my guide. So when you save this page, what'll show up is that, what, what you'll want to say here is, you know, hey, I helped this person get this big thing they want. And then get my guide and use the same copy that you did on the pop-up. And then they click the button, the pop-up comes up for them and they're able to opt in. You can keep the pop-up there again, because if somebody wants to continue scrolling, they'll still be able to see it. But you do want to have a call to action as clear and upfront as possible. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Awesome. Do you want me to save this here or let it revert back to?
I have it open on another screen. Thank you.
Okay, okay, perfect. Awesome. So do you have any other questions for me?
Yes, so at the top, my site menu is not right either. So I have blog, I was trying to build a site menu. And I didn't have one of the options that was in the Go for Gold video. So I was trying to put it in and I messed up something somewhere.
Okay, so under my site settings, we go to site menu. All right, so what are you wanting this to do? So you want to have you want to have a place and order, start your journey. What do you, where do you want this one to go? To opportunity?
Uh, start your, your journey? Yes, it go, I think it goes to opportunity already.
Oh, excellent. Okay, that's great. That's great. Log goes to log. I'm sorry?
Do I not need that label site menu up there? Maybe that's a, I'm confused.
Yeah, that shouldn't be necessary. That's just the menu header there. You could probably take that website page if you click. Well, you're going to need that homepage there anyway. So if you click on where it says site menu, home on that second line, just down one. You could move that to a different menu and then delete the header.
So do I, I just move it up here?
Click on it first, actually. Sorry, yeah, click on where it says home.
Uh huh.
Should pop up a little box and then, yeah, there you go. Move it under blog or something.
Okay.
Under blog?
Or one of the other ones.
Just for now, so it doesn't change where your site is, right? So we saved that? Or did it, did it not, did it not take? Okay, show under menu header, blog.
Apparently.
Good.
Look at that afterwards. You can, I mean, the other option here is go ahead and delete it.
Okay.
And then.
I was thinking, I don't know, I didn't, maybe I didn't need this site menu, but I was just trying to follow those steps on the video and they had site menu and I didn't have one, so I went and put it in there and it made no sense to me.
Yeah, well, so, so the way that the site menu works is that if you wanted to have all of these underneath. Like so somebody would just click site menu and then these drop down, then you would be putting those pages underneath site menu. But if you want to keep them across like this. Then, then you don't need to have site menu here. Does that make sense? We, we could, we could put home here, like we can make that home, right? Like here, well. So we're going to call this home. Right, Greg, am I doing this right?
Yeah, you can make that one home, call it home. Yeah.
Okay, and then the URL, would this be the custom page URL?
Uh, it should just be like, does she have a custom domain? I didn't notice that part.
Yes, yes.
Okay, then you can just actually, the little shortcut is you can put a forward slash in that box and then it just links to the homepage. Then if.
Okay, but the, so, but, but the homepage is no longer linked here on the, the menu. So what do we do now?
Right. Go to add menu item at the top and then choose, it looks like it's all set up. So it says home and then the page is home. And then just make sure it shows under the menu header, home, I guess.
There we go. Okay, and then make it the homepage.
Yeah.
There we go. All right, so let's, let's go check it out.
The internets are being slow.
They are. All right, there we go. There we go. So now you've got home and that takes you here. If we go here. That's going to take you over. I, it's my internet today. I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, there. Yeah. So that's working. Excellent. Awesome. So, so yeah, what, what, what I would suggest that you do, great logo, by the way, this is really pretty. Yeah, so I, I would adjust that, that top part there, just again, to speak clearly to your person and say, you know, hey, you, I help you. To, to get this thing that I know you want. And, and here's how you can go get it, right? And then, of course, you just link to that pop-up, like we've got the button set up there. You're just going to want to edit the copy up there at the top. So forgive me with my slow internet today. This is kind of weird. But yeah, did you have any other questions before we move on?
Enough, you can go ahead and somebody, I don't think I will look time.
Okay, I, thank you for coming out and we'll see you on another one, all right? Keep us posted on, on your progress.
Thank you. I will, yeah.
Excellent. All right, so Rachel, are you here? Let me see, can you raise your hand for me, Rachel? There you are. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
How are you? Yes, I can.
Good, I'm good. How are you?
Great. All right, let's head back over here to a share and talk about your site. All right, tell me a little bit about, oh, this is cute. All right, tell me about what you are hoping to do and what kind of help you need for your site.
So I love the help I've already gotten emailing in to support has been a huge blessing. If you have any kind of questions and just like graphic things, so that's been super helpful. I wanted to make mine basically all custom. I didn't necessarily love the look of some of the kind of pre-made ones. So I found some on the GetEileen website and kind of based them, I guess, kind of like that, trying to make it more custom. I guess my question is, how do I make it more mobile friendly? And then how are people like finding me? Like, how are they finding my blog or how are they finding my site? I do notice that it looks quite different on a mobile than it does on a computer. And I'm wondering if there's just like simple ways to make that easier.
Okay, yeah, so, so to answer the first question, it looks like the custom page that you have set up has, let me see. You've got the three sections here. I think if you make sure, oops, there's link, good job. I think it looks like perhaps they aren't centered inside of their columns. Does that, does that seem accurate, Greg?
Yeah, centering would help there inside of each column. The other thing is, there's like a little button that you can change size and like make it a hundred percent. That's making things mobile responsive is a lot of trial and error. You know, anytime that we do that, it's just like, I'll play with this. Why does it look on mobile? How does it look on desktop? Just by shrinking your browser window. So, yeah, if you go into the page, whoops, that's like.
Not one, sorry. It's like builder links. All right, so we're going to your, is this one my page? Yep, there we go. Yeah, so that's aligned. Oh, that is aligned center.
That's aligned center. You might have to like select all of there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Center it there. There you go.
Mm hmm. Yeah, so that'll make a difference here. For that section. And you could always, when you view your site. Shrink your browser. And you can see it. So now they are, now this section is, is centered. And now we can just center this image where it is. And then just make sure that we have those going all the way down. And I think we can show you really quickly as well. How you can. Let's see, if I go back to the page editor here. See, this one. Is this centered? Is all of it centered? Or am I, am I selecting it all correctly? Yeah, here we go. So this one is not aligned. There we go. These all appear, those are left aligned. Center those.
So if I made them all smaller, would it just look more like more uniform on mobile because it, it fits better? Or there's not really a way to make, make some kind of fit in that three row or four row?
Yeah, so there's an icon, like, actually, if you click on the, say, the Facebook image that she's got on that first column there. And then there's a little ruler icon on the bottom row. And that one you see has a fixed number in there, two hundred and seventy-five pixels. One, there's one dot on the screen. So one thing you could experiment around with is taking that out, if you just delete the width entirely. You can also put a hundred percent in there or some percentage like seventy-five percent or whatever, but but you don't want to put numbers in both boxes really because it'll. But but you don't want to put numbers in both boxes really because then it'll stretch it. And so you can see it made it bigger here. So you'd probably obviously want to apply that to all of them. But then this is kind of that sort of trial and error part, like, okay, it changed the size on desktop. Is that okay for you? You know, is that the style you're going for? It will make it bigger on mobile, as you can see.
Do you like that? Yep, yeah, you like the size there better? Okay, so go ahead and just change them since we're in here.
Yeah, so we can just make them all the 100% with that little change size. If you use those little dots to drag it, those are usually how those numbers get in there. Like, you can see on the corner, there's those dots on the image.
But they aren't scientific. I've, I've, I have thought that I have done this symmetrically, and I never used the ruler before, literally just now. And 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 it's definitely not always done the way that I wanted it to be. So, yeah, so do you see how before those were 275 and this is 325? Another thing that you could do, if you want all the pictures on the page to be uniform, you just want to make sure that they have the same dimensions.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've got those solved up top. And then your other question was, how do people find you? Which is a really important piece of the puzzle, of course. So a couple of things. If you are blogging, which is right here, good job. What you, what you do is, is when you write a blog post, you syndicate it. Now, this is something that we talked about in Go for Gold, and it's definitely, I believe, talked about in HBR. And if there's anyone who can tell you about how to promote it, it is Martha Crecci, and I know you are working with her. So she's teaching as well syndication. So when you create a piece of content, you are broadcasting it out to the world, and you're kind of creating this infinite loop of little pieces of things that you put out, like this or YouTube video. And and those then would point back to this page. Or, for instance, maybe people, somebody lands right here on on this blog, and they really love the blog. And then you say, if you found value in this, you'll love my guide, come here. And then they're like, yeah, I love this, and that that GIF is super cute, so I want to find out more. And then they opt in. And then they also, maybe they're not ready to have a conversation with you yet. Maybe they're gung ho and they're ready to to talk. But more often than not, they, you know, they they're just kind of getting to know you. So the people who opt in here, who have found your blog, you know, who like what you have to say, and they they want updates from you, this is where you continue to send those blog posts in addition to sharing them on Pinterest or Instagram or Facebook or wherever else you're out there putting content. Does that make sense?
So if they've signed up for, like, they're getting my guide, and I get a notification that they're a lead, should I be emailing them when I do blog posts?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
To them?
Yeah, because if they have opted in for this and you're blogging about stuff like this, you're just going to be adding more value to their life by sharing more of that stuff that you're going to be putting into your blog. So it's just, it's a continual, like, I am out here to pay it forward. And if you're someone who loves what I'm paying forward, you might like what I have over here behind the velvet rope. When you're ready, I'd be happy to let you through it, right? But you're basically just kind of creating that environment where you're like, you know, I'm here to serve, I'm here to serve, I'm here to serve. I got more over here, but I might keep serving over here. And then, of course, the people who are ready make their way through those barriers, right? So whether that is to reply to an email from you and a campaign that says hit reply, and you start a conversation, or it's you offering, you know, an online class or a, maybe a small thing that you sell, or a webinar type presentation or or anything along those lines, or a lead group.
Okay, so if they have signed up for that as like a lead, I now have their email, that is that permission marketing, so I can send them blog posts and things like that, right?
Yes, that's right.
And when we do blogs, is there a way that sends them automatically to people?
So there is a way to do that. However, I highly recommend that you be a little bit more strategic and intentional than that. So while technically, yes, when you are logged in and you create a blog, you have a way to send it out directly from that page that you create the blog on. So if I go to manage, and I go here, you go, you also have share. You can grab the link right here, or you could post directly to Facebook or Twitter here, which is fine. But if we wanted to take this one and send it out.
It actually only shows up on new posts.
Oh, that's only new posts. Got you. So when you're making a new one, you have the ability to send it out automatically. I actually recommend that you should be emailing your list on a consistent basis and definitely be subscribing to people who are, you know, sort of in in a similar sort of bat signal niche, if you will, that that are into similar things, who have email lists, like Success Leaves Clues. And especially if you're following people who are the same kind of people that would take up the 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 mind and maybe even some of the wallet of the people that you ultimately want to be working with. So so observe what they're doing, because they're probably doing a lot of the things that you could be taking inspiration from. So all of that is to say, you you, instead of going down here and you say, when this post is published, send it to contacts this way, email and text message, which just sends it out to everybody. What I suggest that you do is that you go and you create a new message that you you filter your contacts for the people who are your leads, who have opted in on landing pages, who are your subscribers. And you send out an email to your subscribers every week and say, hey, here's a blog post that I wrote. This is what it's about. Here's some updates that are coming up. Here's some interesting stuff that's happening over here. Just kind of give them a, hey, here's, here's a snapshot of what's going on in this world, if you want to come engage with it. And then, of course, you take that blog post link, and that's what you're going to connect to a pin on Pinterest or to a YouTube video or to a Facebook post or in, you know, sort of your Linktree type page that you can make in custom pages on your Instagram account.
Okay, sounds great. I think that's, I do have it some of those places, but I think sending it out directly to people, I need to get on.
Yeah, yeah, you're doing an excellent job. It's 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 really beautiful brand wise. You've you've got a nice sort of like color filter here. Are you a photographer at all?
No, not at all.
Well, you've you've got, you've got the filter figured out and an excellent job picking the colors. It's really pretty. I would, I would recommend that you, just like I I'm saying a lot now, is is just to have some kind of bold, easily readable, grab-your-attention text that really calls out and speaks to the person that you're showing up for, that you want to serve. And then, of course, offering them some way that you can help them right now. So that would be like your lead magnet.
Okay, sounds good.
Excellent. All right, thank you so much. All right, you guys, let's head over into Q and A. I think there's just a couple left here. Excellent work, team. All right, Jen asks. She said, I was in the branding intensive and built all my brands around Jen James. And searching for my possible custom URL, I found one combination using my middle initial. Is it weird to have that and not to have the initial in my logo? You are, I think you're a student of Martha's. I don't know if you've noticed this, but Martha's website is not marthaecrecci.com, it's marthaecrecci.com. So there's nothing wrong with that, and she doesn't brand herself as Martha E. Crecci. She just brands this, brands herself as her name as you know it. There is that a little additional detail on that other URL that she has. And she does brand a couple of other ones, to be fair. So, no, it's it's not an issue for you to insert a middle name. And, you know, in in a lot of cases where if you want to be a little more specific, you could brand your name and then underneath it, in the same image, have the clearly spelled out in in plain font full URL, right? So if you say, you know, Jen, middle initial james.com, and you put that underneath a Jen James logo, now you've covered all the bases. So that's what I would recommend. All right, hello Suzanne, could I sell my 28 day challenge here? Then have them transfer to my challenge vault. But the challenge vault doesn't start until the first of the month. So there is this thing that you can do in your vaults, Suzanne. And let me see, I think I could just do this inside of, you know, maybe just inside of the Get Oiling Vault and and show you real quick. So in the member area, I would go over here to.
I'm not seeing your screen yet.
Yeah, I I wanted to make sure that I'm not doing anything that would.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, because that was definitely a problem earlier. I just, I don't want to show any sensitive information. All right, so so what I would do is, if you if you want to add people to a vault, but you are not running the challenge yet, whatever the materials are that you're going to use for the challenge, let's just say that it's an online class. There's a little eyeball right here, and if you click it, it's going to hide it from the vault, so it's not going to be visible to the people who join it. So maybe you hide everything except for the welcome page that, you know, tells them to join the Facebook group or, you know, to set their reminders or mark their calendars or whatever that gets them excited for what's to come. Maybe you have that in a discussion room, so people can start sharing accountability ahead of time. So if you are doing something that's time sensitive or time specific, you can just hide the thing in the vault that you would be using. All right. Leslie says, I love how she customized the font and look of her site. Do you have to have premium for this? You you do get to customize to a degree, right? At basic and other levels, or what does it look like?
Yeah, I mean, I think Rachel's site had, you know, relied heavily on graphics. Changing the default font for like the menu and some of those default colors. It is on premium and higher, it's included on premium and higher, but there is an add on for basic. If you have basic and you want that, it's less than the cost of moving to premium. So if you're interested in that, certainly reach out to support at Get Oiling, and we'll take care of you.
Excellent, okay. Heather asks, how do I copy the Zoom call invite to send it to someone who is not already in my CRM? Like, so for prospects? Do you have, you have the John L. account up that you can share, Greg?
I do, yeah, I was just going to share that out here. Okay. So click on the Zoom meetings link, obviously. Now, there was, I think, maybe what you're referring to, Heather, here is there used to be like a copy link here. And we discovered like a little glitch with Zoom where they were providing the wrong link right here in some cases. So now to get the Zoom link, the right one, is you click on the Zoom meeting name, and then your copy button is here. So just one step in, click into the meeting, and then you've got your copy and send and share that used to be out here. Or hopefully, we can bring that back if they get that bug fixed on their end. But it was confusing so many people because it was sending out the wrong meeting ID. So, yeah, click on the meeting and click copy.
Excellent. All right, Suzanne, if a challenge is already running for the present month, could I still hide the eyeball for new people paying? So one thing that you could do, if you're using one vault and it's a recurring thing, and you don't want people to access the vault until it's time. So let's just, if it's like a challenge that you run monthly and it starts on the first, and you don't want them coming in on like day 28, because that's when they paid, then what you would do is you would add them to the vault later. So you would have them make whatever the purchase is, get whatever the thing is, the initial thing that they paid for. And then you would tag them with whatever tag that you wanted on that landing page. And then what you would do is you would go and and filter for that tag and then add them to the vault on the appropriate date. All right, and then we got one more here. Heather, I initially chose a URL that is clearly essential oil related. Now that I'm going through Martha's programs, I'd like to change my URL. Is that possible, or do I need to keep the URL for a certain time? You can change it anytime, right?
Yeah, just reach out to us, depending on whether you got it through us or if you bought it on your own, we'll help you out with that.
Excellent, excellent. You guys, thank you so much for all of your great questions. Who is really excited to get out there and make it happen this week? I am so jazzed to see you guys and the work that you're doing. Oh, and one more thing. You want to have a Get Oiling site review, like the ones that we did today? GetOiling.com/websitereview, and you can get onto the calendar. We have two slots every week. Go ahead and hop on. I know, I think for the next two weeks, those are, like, they're filling up, but like, you've got in advance to get this done. So we're here every week, and you can get a website review too. Awesome. Hey, what's up, team?
Hello, hello.
Excellent. All right, so you guys want to say anything to close this off?
Well, it's been great having you all here. Hopefully, you found these, find these new features useful. Certainly, reach out if you have any questions. Thanks for being here.
Excellent. All right, well, we'll see you guys next week. Same bat time, same bat channel, send us your websites, we're excited to see them.
Awesome. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, guys.